Good afternoon, I'd like to call this meeting of the Lee County Board of Commissioners to orders. Nice beautiful spring day, welcome everybody here. And we'll start off with the pledge of allegiance, I'm sorry, with the invitation by Reverend Dr. Ricky Frazier. And then we'll have the pledge of allegiance before we continue with the meeting. Thank you.
Let us bow our heads. Gracious and eternal God, we thank you again for allowing us to come and assemble here at this appointed place at this appointed time. Thank you, God, for the commissioners who were gathered and the citizens who have come and the staff to discuss business about our county, our community. We pray now, God, that you bless us as we go forward to deliberate, and we thank you for all that you do for us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Are there any additional agenda items anyone would like to add? I can't hear anything. Have a motion?
No.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Approval of consent agenda. Any items on that?
Okay.
Okay, I just have one thing. Sorry Danielle's calling her. On page three, that next to the last paragraph, the first sentence. Just rephrase that. Okay?
What would you comment on the name?
That next to the last paragraph, the board discussed, just, I think there was a word left out there. Okay. But, I mean, it's just a typo. It's just a typo, no worries.
What?
That should be what? Mm-hmm. Okay. Anything else? Okay. Motion?
Robert, make a motion.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Robert. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay, we don't have any public comments today. So we'll move on into really good thing. On page nineteen of your agenda is a resolution honoring Eagle Scouts for Lee County projects. John?
Yes ma'am, my apologies, there aren't any Eagle Scouts here today, but between school, after-school stuff, and most of these young men have graduated and are off at college. So, there really wasn't a whole lot of them to herd up to bring tonight, so I apologize for that. But, this is something that the commissioners discussed several months ago. We were gonna bring this list to the board, but we had some issues associated with the fire and had to recreate this list. So, we think it's pretty inclusive of all the projects that have occurred in Lee County over the last few years. And, did you want me to read the resolution? I'll be glad to.
I would love for you to, I think we need to do that.
I did practice.
Okay. I did too, just in case the Okanichi was, you know, something I had to say. But, no, I'd rather you read it, John.
A resolution thanking Eagle Scouts for service to Lee County. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout has always carried with it a special significance, not only in scouting, but also in higher education, business or industry and community service, this award is a performance-based achievement whose standards have been well maintained over the years. And whereas not all Boy Scouts earn the Eagle Scout rank, only five percent of all Boy Scouts do so. This represents more than two million Boy Scouts who have earned the rank since nineteen twelve. The goals of scouting, citizenship, training, character development, and personal fitness are the cornerstone for the Eagle Scout. And whereas sixteen point three percent of the cadets at the United States Military Academy or West Point are Eagle Scouts, eleven point nine percent cadets at the United States Air Force Academy are Eagle Scouts, and eleven percent of midshipmen at the United States Naval Academy are Eagle Scouts. And whereas Boy Scouts in the Dogwood District of the Okanichi Council of the Boy Scouts of America are active contributors to the Lee County community. And whereas on the Trail to Eagle, each scout is required to plan, develop, and give leadership to a service project for any religious organization or any school or community. And whereas the attached list of Eagle Scouts and projects reflects the commitment by these scouts to helping Lee County to become a better place to live, work, and play. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners hereby publicly express their thanks to all the Eagle Scouts who completed service projects that supported Lee County community efforts, and further thanks to all those in scouting who complete community service hours in support of the citizens of Lee County. And further be it resolved that a copy of this resolution be sent to each Eagle Scout, troop, and district and council for which these scouts represent. The Board of Commissioners also encourages the general public to thank scouts in our community for their service. Adopted this fourth day of May, two thousand and fifteen.
Do you want to read the names?
Oh, I'll be glad to.
I mean, I think the community needs to know these young folks and where they've made the county better.
All right. The scouts below completed projects which include building or rebuilding trails and bridges, trail bridges, repairing and restoring park picnic tables, rebuilding park rail fencing, cleaning, repairing, and restaining exercise trail stations, rebuilding and landscaping planning beds, roof replacement at the boathouse, ballfield dugout roof replacement, repairs to fishing piers, installing playground equipment, constructing patios outside school classrooms, and rebuilding park bulletin boards. The following young men achieved their Eagles. J.T. Barber did his project at Sand Lee Park. Brad Barber, Sand Lee Park. Daniel Bradshaw, Sand Lee Park. Jesse Brogan, Sand Lee Park. Joseph Cherry, Sand Lee Park. Aden Chipewa, Kiwanis Family Park. Forrest Clark, Sand Lee Park. Michael Crumpton, Horton Park. Jonathan Eads, Sand Lee Park. Will Garrett, Sand Lee Park. Spencer Grody, Sand Lee Park. Thomas Geier, Sand Lee Park. Lot of work done at Sand Lee Park. Colin Hall, Sand Lee Park. Austin Johns Floyd Knight Elementary School. Kayla Lang, Sand Lee Park. Daniel Lewis, Sand Lee Park. Mason McGee Floyd Knight Elementary School. Jonathan Ross, Sand Lee Park. Michael Russell, Sand Lee Park. Tony Shager, Lee County High School. Matthew Smith, Sand Lee Park. Christopher Soul, O.T. Sloan, Boys and Girls Club. Michael Soul, Sand Lee Park. Eric South, Sand Lee Park. And Zachary Wade, Sand Lee Park. So Ranger Steve has done an excellent job of recruiting Eagle Scout projects out of the park. And one of the reasons the boys like to do so many projects out there is they get a big helper in Steve. So, he helps quite a bit, and when you're trying to get, you know, folks together to do a project, it's always nice to have somebody with a gator and a backhoe helping you, so.
All those in favor of this resolution? Oh, I'm sorry, would you motion? Okay. All those in favor of approving the resolution and forward to each Eagle Scout troop, district, and council the scouts represent signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Will they, each individual got a copy of the resolution?
Mm-hmm. And I'd also, by extension, like to thank scout leaders, I know you are one, and the parents, you are one. Having Eagle Scouts in our family, that is a lot of work and a lot of dedication from scout leaders and the parents as well. But this is a long time coming, and it's great to recognize these young men, because they've done a lot of great service to the county, for our schools and our parks, to make it better, and that's what it's all about. Okay, moving on to old business. Item number three, recommendation from the Lee County Planning Board for text amendments to the UDO. Ms. Althea Thompson? Hey, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. Public hearings was held April twentieth with the planning board, and these items were discussed in detail at that time. I have the planning board recommendation on three items that were discussed. The first is an amendment to Article ten, Site Design Standards, Section ten point seven, which will be renamed, and the standards throughout this section will be revised to apply for commercial development along fairfares and freeways. Another part of this amendment is to add a new section, ten point eight, for standards for industrial development along fairfares and freeways. The planning board by unanimous vote recommends approval of this amendment as presented.
Okay, we need to do these separately, correct? Okay. Well, but we're gonna do them separately, one at a time. So, right now we're just dealing with the changes, amendments to Article ten, and the addition, correct?
Yes.
Okay. As she so stated. So, do I have a motion?
No.
Any discussion? Okay, all the, sure.
The commercial part of this is what, brand-new for commercial, or what? Why are we making the change, or?
We're separating the commercial and industrial standards. The industrial standards will be a little less stringent than the commercial due to buildings, how they're set back, and having to do with the facade of the building, it's gonna be reduced a little bit for commercial. No, actually, industrial, yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, all those in favor of the amendment to Article ten and the additions to Article ten signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, amendment eight, Article eight.
Yes. The second amendments to Article eight subsection eight point two, point six paving requirement, and this also relates to the industrial changes that we just spoke of. This amendment will allow gravel surface parking lots to be located for industrial and manufacturing uses, and some wholesale trade uses when the development site and parking is located to the side or rear of that area.
Now, that's one I can really score it.
Thank you.
That makes good common sense.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. And the amendment to Article four?
Article four amendment is to Section four point twelve, Historic Preservation Overlaid District. Section four point twelve point seven will be renamed to off-street parking requirements, and specific design standards will be required for off-street parking in the Rosemount-McKeever Park Historic District. The planning board again by unanimous vote recommends approval of this amendment as presented.
You don't mind kind of go over that with me, on this off-street parking?
Okay. This amendment is to just the Rosemount Historic Park.
District.
Just the Rosemount-McKeever Park Historic District. And what it will do is, it is creating design standards for off-street parking, whereas owners cannot park in, on their front lawn, they must park in an approved driveway or parking pad.
I like that. Wish we could do it in the whole county.
A little bit of town.
Yeah. I think you might have some problem with that one. Let me, I'm trying to put me in the Rosemount-McKeever. I'm sure I know, but I don't know about that name, I don't recall right now. Where exactly is that located?
Well, it includes a portion of Hillcrest Drive, Sunset Drive, there's several blocks there.
Right on back in here?
Yes. And kind of to Hornet Boulevard there.
Yeah, I just wanna get the general idea where we are. So this has, how long will you study it? I know this is like a pilot, I guess. It might be permanent, but I'm just saying, we're only doing one section of the historic district right now.
Well, that's the only historic district that we regulate in the city.
Okay.
That is the local historic district, and that's the only one that we can regulate at this point in time.
How far east does it run then? Because I saw historic district signs, I can't remember. Make fun?
You've got some historic, a section over there on Hawkins.
And maybe that's where it was, though.
I have, I do have one map with me that will kind of give you an ideal, only have one.
That's okay with me.
But you can probably pass it around to get an ideal. It runs west of Hornet Boulevard, North Corner, kind of southwest of Weatherstone Street, North Gulf Street, a portion of North Governor, all of it, Summit Drive, Sunset Drive, Hillcrest.
Is this gonna be online for folks?
It is online.
All the shaded areas?
Yes, the shaded areas, the Rosemount-McKeever Park area.
Althea, I know, when we were talking about this during the public hearing before, you know, you said you had, I think, a postcard or a mailing or something and gone around, and then you had a meeting and didn't have a whole lot of response. But, with the approval of this, will they get an additional letter now stating that it's done? You know, or how are we gonna handle that?
We typically don't send, but we're in constant contact with those that need to make improvements.
Okay.
Because it's such a small area and all.
Right.
Historic planners always riding through, and I think she just about knows everybody at this point in time.
So if there's a problem, she's just gonna knock on the door and say, hey, this is the new ordinance?
Absolutely.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I was just curious kind of what the...
Can I just say real quickly, we actually preemptively went out and she's gone out and kind of talked to all the residents.
Right.
Before we enacted this, because it is such a small area, so we kind of gave them a heads-up this was coming, kind of got their feedback, and that kind of thing, so.
Okay, okay.
So, who's taken violations?
The planning staff, the historic planner would work closely with our code enforcement and our zoning staff, and ultimately, the gentleman that works under Ms. Thompson, Bill Morgan, would likely be the person who actually issued the zoning violation.
So, can you provide me an example of how this is gonna work?
Certainly. Likely, what would happen is, it's actually delayed, the way they've done this, is they delayed the effective date until January of next year, to give folks time to kind of amortize in. But what would happen is, if we had somebody in violation, the historic planner would basically let us know, she would likely go, continue to go out there, continue to talk to the folks, encourage them to fix it during this time, assuming that they just completely ignore us. At some point she would turn it over to our zoning staff, zoning staff would issue a zoning violation letter. At that point, we usually give, it's a ten-day process, a courtesy period, if they still fail to move forward with that, then we follow up with a formal notification letter where they're basically given, basically a civil penalty, a hundred dollars a day. And that basically adds up to a certain point, typically it's about thirty days, and then we go, in this case, we go to the city attorney, and then they would basically go to court to try to basically abate the nuisance situation, and collect.
But you're saying they've got from now until January?
Yes.
And they got a heads-up, probably, what, February or March?
Uh, this has been going on since November of last year.
Okay, so they've had a year of really the heads-up.
And I should also add, the Historic Preservation Commission's played a part of this as well, which is a board by the city, and the residents, of course, and folks involved in the historic district, and they are the ones that kind of spearheaded wanting this to be done as well. So this is kind of driven by.
And so they wind up in civil court, or what?
It's usually, I believe it is, it's like small claims, I'm not exactly sure how that works, but generally the attorney would take it over, because you only get to a certain amount, and you know, you really need to go forward, so you can't just let it continue to add.
What is that, three thousand dollars?
Usually around three thousand dollars, yes sir.
At that point, things really get bad.
Yes.
At that point. So, what's the fallback plan when they seem to resist?
Well, now, they obviously would have an opportunity if they wanted to go to the city council, to county commissioners, and complain about policy in general. Again, we've encouraged, that's why we kind of preemptively went out and spoke to everyone, because we went to the public hearings with the city, just like you were having, what you went through, and we asked folks and let them know, you know, if you're concerned about anything in the regulations, if you have comments you want to make, you're encouraged to come out and make those comments, because we understand, you know, there's a cost to this being implemented to those folks. And again, one of the other things we try to do is get folks to understand, hey, if you go ahead now and do some things to bring yourself into compliance somewhat, you'd be a little bit more grandfathered in, so you won't have as much expense to do after the fact.
Okay, I don't need to ask that, that there be a very sensitive follow-up plan to anyone who might get stuck out there for two or three days before they run up a real tab. I'm not, I'm not trying to protect someone who wants to ignore the law, that's not what I'm saying.
Sure.
As long as, as long as the city's gonna understand why this person may not have moved the vehicle, or may not be in compliance.
Yeah, and Ms. Reeves, I guess I would tell you, any situation we have where we're working with a violator, and we know there may be extenuating circumstances, things that we can kind of work with them on, if we know that they're showing effort to try to mitigate the problem, try to fix the problem, we generally kind of extend that time on any issue. So it's usually only situations where we're just getting absolutely no feedback or no effort whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we've got a question on the floor.
Before you sit down, I want, we can do the motion.
Okay.
I just wanted to ask you something.
Okay. All those in favor of the amendments to Article four signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who made the motion?
Robert did.
The article on the building, so, would you take a, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, there are some people interested in really trying to understand what's about to take place, or what might take place, should have been passed, and how it impacts us locals.
And I will tell you, this is not my area of expertise, so I'll give you my two cents on it. I keep referring to our building inspector, Mr. Chris Riggins, and he's been monitoring for me, or for our department on behalf. I think that what he's telling me, the biggest issue that's gonna be affected are primarily some of the larger jurisdictions because of the timing restrictions, where they're getting, we, for example, we usually turn our stuff around more or less twenty-four hour. You call him one day, you get a turnaround, we go out and we inspect. Some of these communities, I guess, are, it's a week to two weeks before they're, you're making your inspection and you're not getting, you know, you're paying for a level of service that they feel like they're not getting.
Okay.
And more or less, at this point, he doesn't really see us being kind of affected by that.
All right. That's fair enough, thank you. We ran into that with the environmental specialist a few years ago, couldn't get out fast enough.
Thank you, Althea, Madam Marshall. Thanks. Okay, the last item under old business is consider a promissory note for along Sanford Lee County Airport Authority. John?
Yes ma'am. At the last meeting, the board approved a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-dollar loan to the Airport Authority as a match for the taxiway and ramp expansion projects. The exact amount was actually two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten dollars, I had done some rounding, the city went ahead and approved it to the exact amount. So, the note is for the exact amount of two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten dollars. I did want to point that out to the board. Also, the terms of loan, it's a short-term loan, twelve months, at three percent interest. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Madam Chair, I have a motion. To approve the promissory note on the Sanford Airport Authority, two-hundred-and-twenty-six-thousand-one-hundred-and-ten dollars for taxiway improvements and ramp expansions. Terms of the loan are twelve months at three percent interest.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, it's new business. The proclamation and relay for life presentation. Ms. Connie, is it Garten?
Mike Martin, the witness.
Garten, okay, Ms. Connie Garten, thank you for being here today.
Thank y'all.
I saved my purple for Friday.
Oh, Friday.
I know, I know, it's a busy week for you.
Yes, I'm on the, I'm on the committee, and I'm also a team captain.
Oh my.
So, after May eighth, I think I'm gonna disappear for a couple of months.
Please go to sleep.
Yes ma'am. Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners, I appreciate your time today. My name is Connie Garten, I'm here representing the Lee County Relay for Life. Twenty fifteen marks thirty years since Dr. Gordy Klapp walked around the track for twenty-four hours by himself in Tacoma, Washington, to start raising money for cancer research. In thirty years, the annual event that became Relay for Life has hundreds of thousands of participants worldwide, all raising money to fight cancer. This year marks Lee County's twentieth anniversary for Relay for Life, and we would like to invite all of Sanford and Lee County to help us celebrate. Once again this year, this is our second year of promoting Paint the Town Purple of several communities across the United States. It's a really big deal, and we're getting there, a little at a time. So this is our second year trying, and we want everyone to participate, show your support, decorate your home, your business with purple ribbons, bows, balloons, signs, you can just get creative. We do have a proclamation from the city, and my apologies upfront, as I mentioned in my email to Ms. Gaynell, that we have just overlooked the Board of County Commissioners. So sorry that happened, because we want everyone involved. I don't think there's anyone walking and breathing in this county that hasn't been affected by cancer in some way. So, I would like to ask the Lee County Board of Commissioners to support our efforts by proclaiming May first through May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, as Paint the Town Purple Days. Thank you.
You're welcome. And we actually do have a proclamation before the board. Do you guys want to read it to the public, I guess? So you get here, it's the Lee County Board of Commissioners proclamation, Paint the Town Purple. Whereas the American Cancer Society is the largest non-governmental investor contributing about three-point-four billion dollars to cancer research. And whereas the American Cancer Society offers communities an opportunity to show their support in the fight against cancer by participating in an event entitled Paint the Town Purple from May first to the eleventh, two thousand and fifteen. And whereas to show their support in the fight against cancer, communities can paint the town purple by donating to the Relay for Life and displaying decorative purple bows inside or outside their homes or businesses, directing purple-themed displays in storefronts, or encouraging everyone to wear the color purple. And whereas money raised during Relay for Life of Lee County supports the American Cancer Society's mission of saving lives and creating a world with less cancer and more birthdays. And whereas donations support the fight against cancer through research and development of cancer prevention, treatment and cures, promoting early detection, and offering support during and after a cancer diagnosis, so that more Americans can celebrate another birthday. And whereas the American Cancer Society funded more than one-hundred-and-fifty-million dollars in cancer research last year alone through money raised in communities across the United States. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lee County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim May first, two thousand and fifteen, through May eleventh, two thousand and fifteen, as Paint the Town Purple Days in Lee County, and encourages all citizens to participate in activities during that week. Adopted this the fourth day of May, two thousand and fifteen.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you very much for your hard work. And look forward to seeing you Friday.
That's right, our event is Friday. We start at five P.M., and this year we're closing at twelve midnight instead of going all night. We had some comments after the event last year, and that's something people want to try, so we won't have to be up all night, just have to...
I kind of personally thank you for that, I'm kind of old stuff, but...
Myself, yes ma'am, thank you.
But thank you for all your hard work, thank you. Okay, the next item, consider preliminary plat for McGivory Estates subdivision. Ms. Althea Thompson again. It's your day today.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome.
The applicant and heirs of Mrs. E.J. McGivory are seeking approval of a preliminary plat of a six-lot residential subdivision located at fifty-six seventy-four Lemon Springs Road. The property was formerly a fifty-five-plus acre tract that included the home place of Mrs. McGivory. To date, a total of six lots have already been created out of this tract as a minor subdivision. To date, a total of six lots have already been created out of this tract as a minor subdivision. A minor subdivision is limited to a maximum of six lots from a parent tract. Therefore, the proposed six lots shall be considered and approved as a major subdivision. Steps required for a major subdivision include a sketch plat which will be reviewed by the technical review committee, a preliminary plat review and recommendation by the planning board, and final preliminary plat approval by the Board of Commissioners. As proposed, each lot would front either Lemon Springs Road or Edwards Road, both existing publicly maintained streets. Each lot would be served by public water and a private waste disposal system. The subdivision design was reviewed by the Lee County and Sanford Technical Review Committee on March twenty-sixth this year. N C D O T advised the developer to have shared driveways between lots seven and eight, lots one and ten, and lots five and nine, and that is reflected on the plat. If approved, the preliminary plat shall be valid for two years. The planning board by unanimous vote recommends approval of this six lot major preliminary plat.
Do you, do you know why the N C D O T buys the developers, you know, shared driveways?
Yes, they're always looking at the number of driveway cuts on a public road and try to minimize those cuts if they can. They're doing that more and more, uh, lately, yes.
Any other questions? Have a motion?
Move to prove.
Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Thank you ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, to consider the home and community care block grant application, item C under new business, Ms. Debbie Davidson. Hey, good afternoon.
Um, today I bring before you the, uh, twenty fifteen, twenty sixteen proposed home and community care block grant. Uh, this is the funding source of the services for Lee County Senior Services as the Lee Department on Aging in Lee County. The Triangle J Area Agency on Aging monitors these funds. The, uh, funding level that you have before you is thir- three hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven thirty-two. However, on Thursday, I received an email that our current allocation is planned to be a hundred and ninety-seven dollars more. So three hundred and fifty-four thousand, nine hundred and twenty-nine with a local county match of thirty-nine thousand, four thirty-eight. These funds will be used for the following services through the senior services department. General and medical transportation purchased through the cult system, congregant and home delivered meals purchased through Aramark Food Services, the information and options counseling program, senior center operations, and minor home repair. This package was approved by our senior services advisory board in our last meeting in April.
Okay, so, I, I didn't write that fast, is, is it's changed to?
Yes.
Three fifty-four, nine twenty-nine?
Yes ma'am.
And then our match is?
Thirty-nine thousand, four thirty-eight.
Okay.
An additional twenty-three dollars, which is included in our proposed twenty sixteen budget.
Okay. Okay. All right, I'll let Gaynell figure that one out. Um, okay, any more discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thanks Debbie, appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, uh, consider budget amendment, um, Ms. Lisa Mentor.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, before you, you have budget amendment number fourteen for this fiscal year. This budget amendment is taking the money from fund balance and appropriating it for the airport loan that you previously approved.
Okay, discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, consider the audit contract for fiscal year ending June thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Yes ma'am, at the last board meeting, you approved the proposal from Thompson, let's see if I can get all the names right, Thompson, Price, Scott, Adams and Company, I've got to get used to this. Um, at the last meeting, and this is just the formal contract to audit accounts, it has to be approved each year. Um, so we're just asking for you to go ahead and approve that for this, um, fiscal year ending June thirtieth.
Okay, any discussion?
Do you know if they've done any business in any of our joining counties?
Uh, joining counties, no sir, they have not.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves, they do do Johnston County, which is, I think, probably closest one to us.
Thanks Lucy. Okay, county managers, report.
Yes ma'am, I just have a few comments and requests. Uh, the first, uh, on page eighty-three, you have a, um, abstract and then on eighty-four, the actual resolution that the Board of Health approved at the board, our board's direction at the April sixth meeting. Commissioners asked the health director to prepare a resolution for his board to approve, asking the state to allow counties to charge a fee reflecting the actual cost of issuing permits for temporary unlimited vendor, food vendor applications. So this was just something that the board wanted to make sure was done, so we just added this here and, um, I guess we just need to make sure that it's forwarded to, um, our local representation at, at the general assembly as well, since it will go to the State Department of Health and Human Resource, or Health and Human Services, excuse me. So, uh, no action needs to be taken there. The second item I have is, I put in, um, your packet for reading only the letter from Saga, um, encouraging a new incentive policy by the board. We don't really have any specifics yet on what that new policy needs to look like, but, um, you know, the last policy that was updated was, was updated by, um, a recommendation from them, so obviously they have some changes they want to make. And at the last, um, uh, retreat, we did discuss this, and so, um, just waiting on them at this point. The third item I have is, um, to remind everybody that I'll be presenting the budget at the next meeting Septem- or May eighteen, September. No, it'll be May eighteen. Um, and I've been discussing, uh, the Board of Education request and the Community College request with the president and the superintendent. So, um, we probably need to pick a date to meet with both of those boards in a joint meeting so that they can appear before you and talk about, uh, their financial concerns and issues related to their budgets. So, um, I'll be happy to throw out some possible dates and times.
Everybody wants to make a note of this and, John and I talked a little bit before the meeting. I know it's like herding cats, trying to get more than one board together, so.
My attitude is, is they're asking to us, we set the meeting and let them make the necessary changes to come and talk to us. But, um, if I present on the eighteenth, um, our public hearing is on June first. So, um, ideally, we'd like to have the discussions with them before the public hearings. So Monday, the twenty-fifth is Memorial Day, so the next day, you could probably have it is on the twenty-sixth of May, which is a Tuesday. The twenty-seventh, probably have some conflicts with church related issues. So then the next day would be Thursday, the twenty-eighth. So either the twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth of May.
Okay, before we go any further, how does that look for everybody here? And I can get out the card.
Time?
Six.
Six.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so you can do Tuesday or Thursday? Thank you. Do you have a chance? Either one, okay? Either one? Okay, all right.
If, if there, any, I'm, I'm either one, but if any chance that they could commit their concerns to writing so that we have something in advance?
Well, we have their budget, um, I have the, the requested budget from the Board of Trustees. It's in a format with, where you could consider it their concerns. Um, the Board of Education, I just have the man, the superintendent's, um, recommended budget right now. So, um, I can ask him that once they approve their budget on the twelfth, to put, you know, something more formally in writing to us. Typically, they do, but, you know, they send it with a budget message which would lay out their concerns or issues.
I, I would still suggest to you that, for me personally, if, if I were in, on either one of their boards, I'd want to commit mine to writing and get it to you, uh, I know you have the budget, but I, it, it doesn't make sense for me to have another meeting to come in and talk about the same thing you could write and tell me about, and I could get my points back to you, uh, in advance, but that's just the way I see it.
Or at least be prepared for discussion.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
Yeah, I make a lot of time.
Um, I'll be glad to meet the superintendent and the president and get that in advance at the meeting.
Okay. And I guess, we, do you, one, John, from what, six to seven, and another one from seven to eight, or?
That sounds fine.
Or six to seven thirty and seven thirty-nine, just?
The Community College discussion's gonna take a lot less time, so it suggests we, we do that first at six, and then we let the Board of Education.
Six, sixteen, six fifteen to six thirty.
Six thirty.
If you're not satisfied, you can come back, thank you.
Okay, yeah, give a little bit more. Okay.
No ma'am, I'm finished.
Okay. All righty, um, all right, commissioners' comments, start with Robert this time.
Somehow now the, my so-called retirement is not like what I've read and heard about. It's just not working out.
It's not working out well.
No, that's it for me.
Okay.
I really want to retire.
You know, they say sometimes when you retire, you're busier than ever before.
That's the truth that has ever been told.
Uh, I, I, I have heard that.
He sees when I take a vacation since I retired every year.
That's why farmers don't retire, we just.
I mentioned something to, uh, Mr. Crumpton earlier, we talked about it a little bit, but I had a, on the local fireman car chief talking to me and he was just talking about the end of event, end of event, we do have fracking in Lee County, they're going. He said, we're not prepared, um, to handle a fire at one of these facilities. And, um, he was concerned about the fact that they need to have a little more knowledge of how to handle. And he mentioned to me the fact that it would be nice if maybe some of those folks in the fire and, or response could take a trip to where this has been going on for a while and see how, what kind of plans they have. We know that if you don't know what you're putting in the ground and it happens, you get away, you, you got a problem. I just wanted to bring that up, that's something that we might want to talk about or discuss and, uh, see if there's something we can do to help them out there.
Just out of curiosity, have they talked with management now?
I'm sure they have, uh, they probably have been discussing it, I'm, I'm sure.
I know that Shane discussed that issue with Commissioner Womack quite a bit. And I know Commissioner Womack had tried to address some of that in the, um, in the legislation that, um, in the rules. But, uh, there was nothing ever firmly, you know, set aside in, by the legislature to help localities pay for that. So I know there's still some more work that needs to be done there. I know that Shane's discussed it with the Fire Advisory Board to some extent, and I would think that that'd be a good place for us to start back. Um, you know, we, uh, we have trailers and other means of, of apparatus in the county that, that are for other issues. And, uh, we probably are, you know, if it starts, we're gonna have to address that issue and it's gonna be something that's gonna cost us. So it'd be nice if the state would help us pay for it.
Maybe they can talk about it with the Fire Advisory Board and, and come talk to us about what their recommendation would be to kind of put them on the level they need to be.
Would the state and municipal management help us with that?
Yes, we can get every, we can get that conversation started, I'll be glad to do it.
Well, I, I like for them to find out what they're doing in the other states, because they might have already had the fires.
And I think that's what they want, they're looking at, is trying to find out what they're looking at.
But, but we can get that without, I, I'm not against them going where they want to go, but we can get that first so that the board will know how local government plays, what role they play in those fires, if any at all.
Yeah, I know the sheriff's department's already taking a trip also, just to kind of get an idea of what they might be dealing with.
Thank you.
Okay, Ricky?
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, just running down a couple of things, um, kind of trying to stick to my communications policy, we talked about the, um, at the retreat. Um, uh, tomorrow afternoon, uh, John and I will be meeting, um, with Indira Everett and Mike Hughes from the, just sort of a follow-up, um, to kind of get some information from them on timelines and, and that type of thing and where they are. Um, it's mainly just, again, a follow-up and just getting information, um, so that we can make sure that the folks out at the Colon, Osoga community near the site are informed and, um, we can, um, keep them up to date on timelines, procedures, policies, you know, um, communication, um.
Is this to discuss if the check is in the mail or?
I'm, I'm kind of more concerned with the safety aspects right now and talking about the water testing, uh, and, you know, that type of thing and getting information to the community, but I'm sure that will also come up with the manager being at the meeting.
I know that, I know that.
The thing that might cost us is certainly relevant, and the check being in the mail is certainly something that I have an interest in knowing.
Correct, correct.
We won't, we won't get a check that's in relation to the contract until they have their permit and they are ready to open for business. So.
What's the timeline on?
That's, that's what we're making.
That's what we're trying to find out, um, the public comment.
But if you say that, I wouldn't say that.
The public comment period is, uh, still ongoing for the permit. It runs to May sixteenth, so I guess it depends on when the permit is issued, um, afterwards, if the permit is issued and what, um, things get added to the permit or deleted on their timetable. But they said in the paper, and one of the things that we're curious about is that, um, they thought that some of this coal ash could start coming this way in the October timeframe of this year.
This is Chad in the window, John.
Yes, sir, but, um, you know, where the, where Plan B would be the second one going, but, um, based on, on what I've seen out there, obviously, they're getting ready for some things at our site as well, so, um, I don't know. You know, that's one of the things we're gonna talk about is what our timetable is and what they see coming down the line. And they may not be able to give it to us until after the permit, but we want them to know we're interested in knowing, in having them, you know, stay in touch with us.
Trying to keep that line of communication open and get information for the citizens, especially in the affected area. Um, Wednesday, John, Ricky, and Daniel and I are gonna go to legislative day in Raleigh, um, hm? Wednesday, legislative day, um, and so, uh, if you have any last minute things, you want us to knock on doors and cases to plead, let us know. Basically, we're just gonna be standing up for, for, um, local rights. Um, Thursday, uh, is the Triangle J Mayor's and Chairs Meeting. Um, I'll be going to that, I think with Mayor Mann, and we're getting a legislative update that day as well. Um, now that we've had the crossover date has passed, I think it was on the thirtieth.
Who chairs that board?
The Triangle J.
Yeah. The Mayor's and Chairs?
Yeah.
The Mayor's and Chairs? I don't, I don't know.
Tim, do you remember the guys, the Mayor's and Chairs Board? Okay, um, Kirby Bowers is the executive director, but he's announced his retirement, Tim.
That's the chairman on the search committee, which we have a recommendation that'll be put forward, um, at the next meeting. But that's been quite an educational experience.
Um. Um.
We have to talk to you later.
But but the but the Mayor's and Chairs, this'll just be the second one I've been to, and the person that leads that meeting was not there at the first one, so that's why I'm kind of.
Mayor Pittsborough used to lead that group at one time.
I'm willing to say it's the mayor of Mooresville, but, I mean, don't quote me on that, but but anyway. But anyway, I, um, uh, I look, that that was a great meeting. We had a presentation on Chatham Park at the last one, um, so the legislative update should be good, and we always have a good discussion. Um, again, on Thursday, just reminding everybody, the Small Business Association banquet is taking place at five-thirty, so if you don't have tickets, um, contact them, that should be a great evening. Um, Larry Stogner from Channel Eleven is gonna be there, um, so that that should be a really neat time. Uh, again, John and myself are going on Friday, uh, to a meeting. Marshall's coordinating, God bless him, I'm trying to get all the, again, herding cats, um, about mainly the Pendergrass US One project, um, out there at Tramway, uh, to get an update on that and some other DOT projects, so we'll be discussing that. This past week, I met with the, um, Mayor Mann and Mayor Andrews, and we kind of went over the, they call it prioritization four point oh, Marshall, correct me if I said that wrong. But but it's basically, um, the prioritization projects for DOT for the county. And and we're kind of working with those, um, you know, they have the new scoring mechanism that the legislature put forth, and and we're kind of adjusting to that process right now. So, the three of us met, and, um, some of the things that scored higher, we didn't see. Living here, you know, and working here and raising families here, we didn't see that those, the ones that scored the highest really should have been put as high. So, anyway, we're gonna, we're gonna meet and and have a conversation with the with the managers and and with the Planning Department and DOT, um, to just kind of plead our case. And I'll I'll get back in touch with all of you on that. It's kind of, uh, we have to have it in by July twenty-fourth, I think. So, I mean, I I'll I'll be updating you again after we meet with them, um.
Let me ask a question.
Sure.
Do you all, do you print out a document that shows where new developments are already up and, uh, started? If you understand what I mean? For example, the apartments out here at, uh, Pendergrass, I guess it is?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Do you put out a monthly chart that shows the new developments starting somewhere?
We don't do a map. We do a monthly report on pro- on like a spreadsheet, if you will, on all the projects. And then, of course, we work with GIS, and then they will update accordingly the information there. But we don't, the Planning Department itself usually does not publish a map that shows that.
Oh, well, who did that, GIS?
Generally, yes, sir. What happens, of course, um, depending on, you know, obviously, if it's a new land subdivision, once the lots are created, it's updated through that process. Um, if it's a, if it's a apartment project, you're not gonna see that necessarily on, when you pull up the GIS screen. But what you will do typically is they'll have a link, um, to like the project and some things like that, so you'll be able to get the information from, um, inspections or planning if you if you're inclined to do that, if you need that information.
Yeah, I think it would be benefit helpful to me and everybody else if you know exactly where some of these projects were being started. Because sometimes, for example, if I don't go out to Pendergrass, I don't even know it's there until it's up and over. Uh, that's gonna be a pretty good-sized project, I think.
Yes, sir.
A pretty good size.
And, um, we just had an another project, um, come to the city down off of South Park. It's another large multifamily project. Commerce Drive, down Commerce Drive, just below eighty-seven, down near, um, Trace.
There were the subways right on the road.
Yes, ma'am.
Where.
It's it's the old Adcock Industrial Park.
Site, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, Mr. Reeves, I think to answer your question, what we could do, I certainly could check with, um, GIS, and, you know, a lot of the information we're getting now through planning is only, is digital. So, probably won't be that difficult to to maybe just do some links there. I I I don't know how, yeah, part of this, like I said, when you're not creating the lots, I don't know legally if they can show it on there, because then it gets confusing whether it's a lot of record versus, you know, just a design. But there should be a way that we can link the imagery, maybe, something on this one.
All right, thank you.
Um, but again, you know, we'll, that's the ongoing process, you know, in in working with those different road projects and 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 dealing with the new scoring, um, so I'll be back in touch with you guys on that. Again, um, as Ms. Garten said, uh, encourage everybody to go out and relay for life on Friday. I have been to eight other relays for lives in different parts of the state and different parts of the country, and I think we still have the best one I've ever been to. Absolutely, so encourage people to go out, it's a great family thing. Um, Cooperative Extension Report to the People is Monday, May eleventh, so a week from tonight at the Ag Center. Um, and on the thirteenth, on Wednesday, Ricky and I are gonna try to get it right and be at the CCCC Joint Chairs Meeting in Harnett County. Um, it's a funny story we'll tell later, but we're gonna be there. Uh, so if you have anything you'd like to share, uh, with us, uh, that we can pass along, um, the the Joint Chairs Meeting is al- always a great meeting, uh, with CCCC. Um, again, you know, uh, be in touch with one of us if if we need to to raise some issues there with the college, with the other, um, representatives. Uh, and the last thing I wanna say, um, I I've got kind of my commissioner's hat off and my mom's hat on now, but, um, last week was a tough week for Lee County. We had a lockdown at Lee County High School with a serious concern, um, about a student. Um, and a- as I have already passed along, um, the the staff at Lee County High School and our Sheriff's Department with our SROs in particular did a phenomenal job with taking care of that situation and looking after our students and our staff there. Um, um, I, you know, I know the kids sometimes get a little antsy being stuck in one place for several hours and not being in their routine, but at the end of the day, even they had to admit it was handled very well. Um, and then the following day, um, Eastleigh lost a student, um, Ms. Canisha Reed at Richmond, uh, while she was playing a soccer game at at Eastleigh Middle School. She was a fantastic young lady, um, for those that had the privilege to know her. So, just keep her family in your prayers and your thoughts. And Eastleigh Middle School staff has done an amazing job with those kids because she was very well-known and well-loved by their students. And, um, Friday was a day, and today was too, so they've done a good job. And and also to commend the other, um, middle schools in the other counties that are in our conference. Their support has just been overwhelming, which has meant a lot too. Um, uh, so, we are all one family and we're connected together. And it it's nice, even when we have a really tragic situation, to see everybody come together. That's what it's all about. So, um, with that being said, anything else, fellas?
I got one thing. I don't know, I guess we all got one from Miss Mary, uh, Church.
Yes.
You know, anybody serving as a volunteer for fifteen years deserves a nice letter of appreciation or resolution. We don't already do that. You may already do that, Danielle?
Yeah, we sent a letter, um, actually, after speaking with Mrs. Davidson this afternoon, Miss Church is going to be able to stay on the board. She thought that she was gonna have to come off.
Oh, all right.
But she isn't, she's gonna be able to continue serving, and she's willing to serve again, so she'll be submitting her application.
That was a touching letter, that.
Yeah, she kinda jumped the gun a little bit without checking the things thoroughly before.
All right, cancel the letter.
But that that that's that's nice, to get a good letter like that, it really is. Um, okay, all right, I have a motion to adjourn.
So, move to adjourn?
All right, all those in favor say aye? Aye, all right, thank you very much. Have a great afternoon, folks.